Work session and meeting of Essex County School Board will now come to order. Clerk of the Board will now do the roll call.
Mr. Croxton?
Here.
Mrs. Sidner?
Here.
Mr. Bruny?
Here.
Ms. Bundy?
Here.
Mr. Hunley?
Here.
All right, before I ask if there's any corrections or additions to the agenda, what was our final number of public comment speakers?
It's on there. I think it's like maybe close to 10 or 11.
Well, it's 10 when I saw it earlier, but I think it might have gotten a little smaller. And the reason it's important is it did get a little smaller then. Like our number two and three, I understand they're the same person?
Well, the same.
One of them's going to speak, not both of them? Okay, so now we're down to eight. Eight times three is 20. Question is, do you guys want to give them five minutes, which would make a total of 40 minutes versus cut them to three?
Do we have the amount that requires us to drop it to three?
Well, it doesn't require us. It just means we gotta, we have to choose to add an extra 10 minutes to allow them to say five. But yes, we're over the amount. The amount would be, once it gets to seven, we're supposed to cut it to three.
I would say three.
Yeah, it'd be three.
Okay.
To be consistent.
Yeah.
Just to be consistent.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Okay. So we're, yeah, we're down to eight, so we'll cut them to three. Thank you. Are there any other?
Not that they want to hear what they have to say, but again, just being consistent.
Oh, no, no, that's why I asked. Absolutely. Just, are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Board members? Okay. All right, work session. The first item up is capital improvement plan options. And for everyone's, Mr. Randy Jones, I see him here. For everyone's edification, the public and the board members are aware, we're having a public, a town hall on this and numerous other countywide options in two weeks, on Monday the 27th. It is Monday right now. Monday the 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the EHS Auditorium to receive public input. Our desire tonight is just to, just to continue this process moving forward so that our input from the public can be more focused on, on a particular option that we're just still continuing to look in and refine and-
We just tested.
Apply details to. And that'll be based on this presentation and what the board, the will of the board leaves.
We should left it up.
But I just want to give the public and heads up about that to get the word out, please. We would like as much public input as possible on Monday the 27th of October at EHS Auditorium.
Yeah, if I'd known you were going to be next.
Literally five minutes ago, he was on his way.
I thought he was later. I would have said we could have. Can you exit out of the PowerPoint real quick?
Yeah.
Check your display. Where do you know?
Uh, you.
Yeah, let me.
You maneuver through there.
Yeah. Does it say that? Let's see. I just want to see if we duplicate real quick if it's going to come up.
It should do it.
In, in theory. In theory, it certainly should.
Board members own.
Let me check.
Okay. If Mr. Jones will go as slow as you want, if you want to go through the presentation like it's the first time you've ever heard it, he can do that. Or he can speed it up a little bit and we can focus on, you know, what real questions we have. It's completely up to you. You know, kind of give him some guidance because, you know, otherwise he feels like he's reading to us. But if, you know, if some of you are newer to the board or missed the previous presentation, if you want him to go through it, you know, really, really slow, he can.
Well, I would recommend him not go very, very slow. We've seen this presentation multiple times and it's going to be on the slide as well, hopefully. And so.
Okay, how about Mr. Hunley? Mr. Bruny?
I'm good. I mean, I read it through several times. I've got my opinions now.
Yep, and, and again, this is, this begins the discussion. You know, later night, we vote on an option. That begins the discussion, literally.
There we go.
Focus our efforts on, on an option and then, you know, we can modify them from there. So I think they want the, just the highlights.
Great. That sounds great. Well, thank you all for having me back this evening. And I'll just run through this and hit the highlights. If you see something you want me to stop and expand on, feel free to just, just let me know and we'll do that. Of course, you know, this has started, this process started several years ago. There was a committee that was established that, to look at that, the folks listed on the slide here are the ones that were on the committee, including myself. The committee met three times in 2023 to kind of review and, and update various iterations of the options that we came up with. The goals of the committee at that time were to have two campuses with three buildings, preferably to maintain a 1 to 18 student teacher ratio, have a pre-K5 building, a 6'8" building, and a 912 building configuration. With the idea being that this would carry Essex County Public Schools through the next 25 to 50 years. There's been a lot of discussion about student enrollment. These are the student enrollment figures for 2025, the latest ones that I have. The enrollment is continuing to decline as you all are aware. In grades K5, there's 454 students, 6'8", 229. Grades 9 through 12 is 412 for a total of 1,095. With the desired 1 to 18 ratio that we are proposing, even if we were not to factor in Tappanik Elementary School, we would have enough capacity in schools to go at least 25 more years, even with all the projection growth. And that is also not, not going by the Virginia Department of Education's guidelines of 1 to 24. So we have built-in capacity even above and beyond that. So you can see the capacity analysis there on the bottom of the slide. There's a number of classrooms in the second column, the Virginia Department of Education capacity calculation, and then the desired Essex County Public Schools capacity of 1 to 18. And you can start to see there that with the 1 to 18 ratio, we would have 1,620 students. And in the next 25 years, that's projected to not go over 1,604. So, now that can change. And the, the nice thing about this is that we have the built-in spare capacity to increase class sizes if it's necessary or required.
Can I speak to some board members? Do you have a, can you point with your mouse?
Yes.
So those capacity numbers, is all right out of our comprehensive plan and the-
Well, do you see it? I don't think my pointer's showing up.
That's okay. That's okay. If you look at that, number one, that, that in parentheses below 1095, 51% of capacity, that's actually an overstatement because that's based on the 2,152 that's directly below it, 1095 divided by 2152. That doesn't include the elementary school.
Right.
You'd have to add 672, which would bring it up to 2884, which is 38% capacity. So if you include all of our facilities, which is legit, we still own them all, we're at 38% capacity, just based on square footage, and that's at the 1 to 24 ratio. So this, this jumped ahead to the, you know, conclusion that we were already, based on previous analysis, we were already going to pick, you know, these two campuses to consolidate on. And so it, so it took out that 672. I hope that makes it. So we're, we're truly at 38%.
Currently with all, all your schools.
If you count everything, yes.
Yep.
And the other last important thing here, what's really important that concludes that this is not risky, is that in the next 25 years, the Census Bureau only predicts that there will be 1,604 school-aged children in Essex County. And all of these plans, if every one of them chose to come to Essex County School, which we hope, we hope eventually happens, we get all 1,600 of them back here, we still have room for them. That, that's the point of that, from a risk standpoint. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So we're going to just run through the three different options. Option number A is to move grades PK through five to James H. Carey Intermediate School, which I refer to as JCIS. To do so, we would have to add additional restrooms for the pre-K, K, and 1 grades. And then we also, we're looking at relocating the board offices to somewhere at JCIS, and I'll show you some different options when we see this site plan. We would move grades 6 to 8 to the Essex High School campus. We would renovate the existing CTE building to house grades 6 and 7, which will still allow for room for a fieldhouse and some future CTE labs, should the board decide to, to do that. And then 8th grade could go back into existing Essex High School. And there's an, an area that we've just kind of picked out that could possibly locate that. And then one thing you'll notice on this, all three options, is that we would construct a new regulation-sized gym at one of the two campuses. And then basically, grades 9 and 12 remain as they are at Essex High School. So at JCIS, we've kind of shown here where the different grade configurations could be. This could be a rearrange, could be moved around. This was just an easy way for us to graphically show where it would go. The, the peach color would be the pre-K kindergarten areas. The darker peach colors are the class, the bathroom restroom additions. First grade would wrap around that in the blue. And then we would have second on the front side of the large courtyard, third behind that, fourth on the back wing, along with fifth grade on the back wing. We're showing three potential locations for a school board office. Top left would be, there's a classroom wing up there that could be renovated into board offices. There's also the annex building, which has 10 classrooms in it that could also be renovated into a board office. And then we have the existing locker rooms and classrooms on the existing gym that could also be renovated and expanded for board offices. That one has the most exposure in terms of public access and that type of thing, so that was something we discussed at the last meeting, that that's possibly something that could be enhanced to create a nice board office for the administration.
Behind the school.
Well, this, this option shows it at the front. Yeah, there's.
Yeah, so they could take advantage of that formal, remember the entrance to the middle school?
The old, the old entrance, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this area. So that could, you know, we could, we could put signage up there, make it more of a formal grand entrance, you know, and, and make the school board, you know, wing more distinctive.
A little more public. A little public.
More publicly accessible.
Yeah, instead of tucked around the back of the building.
Yeah, I was thinking you were talking about behind the back.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah.
But then those other two spaces still remain available for-
Right.
-future growth, you know, invite the YMCA, early childhood, you know, programs. I mean, we, we have space.
The, the annex building right now is mothballed. It's just basically-
Correct.
Yep.
But it wouldn't take much to-
Right.
Get it back upstairs.
Right.
And, and the space at the, at the top left, you know, that's, that's being used today as classrooms. It's just sparse, you know?
Yep.
And then in between that space, you, you see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you know, 6 rooms plus the, the library media room that aren't, you aren't in this plan necessarily utilized. So they're available as well for, for like the, the ones that aren't grade-specific, the classroom.
Right. Yeah, those would definitely be an enhancement for elementary school, school functions because those were spaces that were really designed for the intermediate grades, so. And then over at the Essex High School site, we could locate the 8th grade in that yellow area. There's a wing there where we have some classrooms available. The CTE building right now, the, the bottom in the blue and the brown are the high bay areas that are the old CTE labs. Those, part of that could be used as for the fieldhouse, part of it could be for future CTE expansion. But then we could house grades 6 and 7 in there with some other collab-type functions that would work out very nicely. That's actually would be a pretty cool building for a, a new middle school. So there's a lot of opportunity there. You'll see the existing gym outlined there on, on the roof plan of the high school. And then we're proposing a larger regulation-sized gym to go there back behind the kitchen area adjacent to the, the track area and the, and the football field area.
And if I can add, what, what's not shown is that there would be a closed, covered, you know, corridor-
Yes.
-between the building coming into the back at the appropriate location, probably going over towards the new gym and then in that way.
We'd have, we'd probably need to look at relocating the dumpsters and things like that, too. Yeah.
So that kids wouldn't have to walk outside.
Yep.
Another idea, based on Mr. Bruny had some good inputs, and Mr. Spencer sent us a very thoughtful email today, and I don't disagree with any of it, but where we, we've already set aside basically a half of the high bay area that used to be vocational classroom space for reinvesting in CTE. Mr. Bruny's input was, he wants more space set aside, you know, and I, I'm totally in agreement with that, and I think that was the input of, of Mr. Spencer as well. And the good news is we have so much space that we could do that. We probably shouldn't chop up, so that fieldhouse, there's nothing that's planned to be in there that can't be incorporated in the new gym, or to the extent that it's locker rooms, in the locker rooms that aren't used in the existing gym. You know, there, there is space all over that building. It's just a matter of-
That whole room to the left where it says fieldhouse and all that, that used to be the vocational school, right?
Yeah, the whole thing did.
The whole thing.
And what we were proposing since, since-
Oh, yeah.
Since on one hand, the building's vacant, on the other hand, the athletic department is utilizing some of the space just because it was available and no one else was using it. But the activities that they're doing in there, weight rooms and team locker rooms, we can put, we can formalize those and either put them in that corner and, and make it nicer, or we can put them in the old gym, or we can put them in the new gym. So there's, I don't want to, in other words, any activity that's going on there, we still need to accommodate it, but we can just think it more, more thoughtfully and, and into a better space. And then, and if, if we run out of space, we, we build a, a new metal building, you know, out back, and there's some of those around the, the track that perhaps aren't being used as efficiently as possible, like where the wrestling team used to be and stuff.
Right, right. We're just not seeing it in that picture.
But, but these are all the details. This just demonstrates that everything we need to do does fit. These details, we kick back over to this guy and we send them away. You figure this out. You figure out what is best. We shouldn't be deciding. We're just demonstrating that it all fits, that there's space for everything. You know, I could make an argument where it's shown where the 8th grade is. Each of those hallways has four large classrooms. There's enough room for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade right there on the one-story, you know, portion that, that's segregated from the two-story portion. You could put all the middle school classes there and put some upperclassmen out back, you know? Might be a better thing. But again, I, we don't need to decide that, that we have their space. The, the point is that there's space for all of it. And, you know, so this just shows a workable example, but there's probably better solutions, and I think we should defer to our superintendent and his staff to figure out those solutions. So, so we're not locked in at this point.
So looking at the, the budget estimate, we would, to add the restroom additions for the pre-K, K, and first grades would be $600,000. Locate school board somewhere on the JCIS site, around 8,000 square feet would be 1.2 million. New gym at Essex High School, which would be 14,000 square feet, would be 6.2 million. Renovate CTE building for grades 6 and 7, that would be 6.6 million, and that would still allow space for the fieldhouse and future CTE. And then moving grade 8 to the, back to Essex High School would be no cost. For a total of 14,600,000, you're adding other soft costs and the total estimated project cost is a little over 16 million dollars.
Can you go to an overhead of, maybe an option B, but either a satellite overhead of JCIS or, or the classroom one? Probably a satellite overhead.
Let me go to option B?
Yeah, just that one slide that has a satellite overhead. For the audience, if, if you look on the bottom right side of the slide there, through that patch of woods, behind there are 17 acres, well, including a portion of that woods, and then there's a field, which you see in the bottom right corner of the slide. That is 17 acres owned by Essex County that they have no particular use for, but they own it, and it's adjacent to our property. So a, a common thing I hear, as far as a common concern, is affordable housing, teacher housing. You know, we can, there's nothing that prevents us from, you know, having a study done, looking at, being more intentional about getting a, a teacher housing put out there. The next presentation you're going to hear, you know, really is looking for space to put, put solar panels, or whether they be in the field or on the roof of something new that we construct. But that should be part of this plan as well, and that, and it's on land that we already effectively own because the county will, will let us use it, either for energy utilities or for, you know, for actual housing and utilities. But so, so let's not miss that, how that fits into the plan. It's not really applicable just to option B. It's applicable to any option, but this, this slide shows it the best, that that 17 acres is behind there. And it's kind of landlocked property. It backs up to, it's got houses all around it with no other real access except from, from JCIS property. So, any questions on that idea? But that's something that we, we should definitely, you know, look into. And if, if that's a real need, let's address it. Thanks.
Whoops, sorry. So option B is very, very similar to option A, moving the elementary school to JCIS. Here, in this option, we would renovate the 10 existing classrooms in the annex building and then also construct a middle school addition that would house grades 6 and 7. We would, here, we would construct a regulation-sized gym at JCIS and then relocate the 8th grade to Essex High School, and then grades 9 and 12 would remain. But same plan that you saw previously, no real changes here. As Mr. Croxton mentioned, this is a, a concept idea that we came just basically to show that everything will fit. The in blue would be a new addition. In red would be the annex classrooms that would be renovated. And then the gym would be located next to the middle school so that we would have that available for the students to use. So plenty of property be at back behind there. Circulation is going to be a challenge, onsite circulation is going to be a challenge with this, with buses and parents and pickup and drop off, but we have a lot of property to work with that we can, we can develop solutions for that pretty easily.
Yeah, onsite you could, you could address, but what you can't address on this option, which gives me concern, is Marsh Street. There's only one Marsh Street-
Yes.
-for all the staff and parent-
Yep.
-and bus traffic. So I think it would cost us to exacerbate that more than, more than necessary. That, and the, you get the new gym that we all want, the community wants, but I don't know that it's in the most desirable, on the most desirable campus for a new gym.
Here, the budget, some similar numbers here. The restrooms, 600,000, board office 1.2, new gym 6.2. We would have to demolish the maintenance building and then renovate the annex and do a new addition. So that brings our subtotal to 18.5, and then you add your soft costs, brings the project to just under 20.5 million, 20.4 million. Option C, you see, you see the theme here, moving the elementary school to JCIS. Here, we would, instead of renovating the CTE building, we would demolish the existing CTE building and construct a new freestanding middle school that would house grades 6 and 7. We'd incorporate the fieldhouse and future CTE in there as well. The regulation gym would be at Essex High School, the new gym. Relocate 8th grade to the high school, and grades 9 through 12 would remain the same. So here, it's a very similar slide. We're basically just tearing down the old building and building a brand-new building. So the only advantage of this is you're getting a, a new 50-year building as opposed to maybe a 35-year building versus renovation. But if, either way, if the buildings are well-maintained, they're going to last well beyond 50 years, so. Costs, this is the, the most expensive option because we are tearing down a building and building a new building back. Restroom additions, the same. Board office, the same. Gym is the same. We would have to demolish the CTE building. That would be 300,000. Build back a new building for grades 6 and 7, CTE and fieldhouse. That would be 12.6 million for a subtotal of just under 21 million. Add soft costs and we're nearly 23 million. So that is the most expensive option that we have. Then option D, we spoke about this last time, is basically continue to invest in Tappanik Elementary School. The roof is one of my more, I, I have a concern about the roof system that is there, is the double roof system. And other than tearing off the top roof and going back to the original asphalt roof, the best option is to put in a rubberized roof coating system. I did find out and I did talk to a vendor, you can now get a 20-year warranty on that. So that's just something to take into account. But that's still not going to negate the fact that you've got two roofs over that building, and that just inherently is going to be problematic for you in the future. The HVAC system, we concluded in our initial assessment that is beyond its useful life, that is, and I think that's been, is being evidenced by the facts that you're, you're constantly having to make repairs on the system. You can only make repairs for so long, and eventually it's just going to stop working. The concern is you would have a catastrophic failure of the HVAC system at a very inconvenient time. The way that building is designed, you cannot get fresh air in easily, and it would be very difficult for you to operate school if the system was non-operational. And I think we'll hear more about that in, in the next presentation as well. So just to do these two things, and again, this is only addressing the roof and the HVAC is, we're estimating a little over 12 million dollars for that. So these costs do not take into account that this was an open concept school. Some of y'all may have actually been there when it was an open concept school. Then when that didn't work, new portable metal walls were put in. And the portable metal walls were really only intended to be a temporary solution, but of course, they end up being there for decades, and they are not good for acoustics. They, they, they move, they get dented. There's lots of issues with that. It makes the HVAC system not work as efficiently. So just doing the roof and HVAC system are not going to inherently address some of the other issues with that school being an open concept school. So a much bigger, larger renovation would be required at some point in the future, which would have a much higher cost. When we did our analysis on it, it was very similar in cost to just replacing the entire school with a brand-new school. So that's how much renovation would have to happen. So we wanted to make sure that you all understood the effects of escalation. All right, now, we are assuming a 3% escalation per year. When we did the first analysis in 2024 for costs, we were at 12.1 million. You start adding 3% on per year, that over five years, you've added about 1.5 billion costs. We're all dealing with that. We all know what inflation does. We can tell when we go to the grocery store, so this is just another example of inflation eating into your available dollars. So just more for your information to see what the impact would be over five years. So our summary of cost options is option A is slightly over 16 million, B is 20.4 million, C is nearly 23, 22.9. Then option D, just to address the roof and the HVAC system and the lighting, would be about 12.5 million dollars. So these are some of your next steps that we talked about last time, was to, so that's an option that you as a board would like to proceed with. And then, once the board has made an option, sets an option, that can be refined and modified per your direction, and we will provide an updated budget if you want to change some of the things that we've, we've shown. And once you've done that, my recommendation is that it be shared with board supervisors. They are the funding source, as you know, so they would also need to buy into the, the process and the plan that you've put in place. And then at some point, you would need to solicit for an A&E firm to prepare the final drawings for bidding to general contractors. A notional timeline, obviously this is not up to date, but I didn't want to change it because you all haven't made a decision yet. But when you do select an option, we would probably need a week or two to update it, depending on if you have any changes for it. You would need to set and hire an architect. That could be done December, January. If you would like the project to begin construction this summer, you would need to have your AE complete the bid documents, which are drawings, specifications, so we can get it out for bid in May. And then we would like to have construction begin in July, and that would last for 11 months. months. So, we'd be complete in July 8th of 2027, which is a pretty short duration in the grand scheme of things, but it's definitely doable. So, as far as the notional phasing sequence, you can move the eighth grade back to Essex High School at any time. You could move them back in 2026 if you chose to do that. If you chose option, we just did this for option A because it was the lowest-cost option. But if you do choose to option A, you could renovate C T E building for grades six and seventh. That could be done from basically July 2026 through June of 2027. That's the 11-month timeline. That would give you all as a board time to get furniture moved in and get teachers in there to set up their classrooms so they'd be ready to go in August. To renovate the J C I S for the elementary school, that can begin almost immediately. All new construction would occur within the courtyard spaces. So, because that building has quite a bit of extra room in it, I think we can isolate where the contractors are working, separate them from the, the classes are ongoing. That work could also happen in the evenings, on weekends. It's a relatively short duration. They could really accomplish it all over one summer if that's how you as a board decide you want to proceed. So, a lot of options there in terms of how we accomplish that. The same thing for the board offices. Once you all decide if you would like to relocate the board offices and where you'd like it, a schedule can be developed for that as well.
Even if that work led into next school year, if we moved the eighth grades before then, that would just give us even more room.
It would give you more room, yeah, absolutely. It'd give you another wing to, we could figure out. So, the next step would be to move into your renovated C T E building in summer 2027, move your pre-K 5 to J C I S for, become a new elementary school, and that would be in the summer 2027. Move your school board office. I say summer 2027, but that could be, depending on which option you choose for the board office, that could be done much sooner if the board chose to do that, so. A lot of, a lot of options and variations of this. But the main thing is, we wanted to show a schedule that was realistic, that did not project this project out three years. So, we're trying to keep it within a reasonable timeline. So, we get the best bang for our dollars, and inflation doesn't start eating us up, so. What kind of questions can I answer for you all?
Well, I think 11 months is kind of, that's a concern. We're talking 11 months, that's a lot of work to be done in 11 months.
Yes.
And so, you have to take into account the weather.
Absolutely. The nice thing is, if, if the board chooses option A, most, all that work is interior renovation, so the weather wouldn't be, have nearly as much of an effect. Yeah.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. That's probably one of the biggest advantages.
Well, if we went with A.
Yes, yes. If you went with B, or C, or even D, we would need to come up with a different timeline for you because that's going to change. Because if the C T E building was torn down, that's going to take significant amount of time, yeah. That would probably be more like a 20, 24-month period, so.
The C T E building, that's in good condition to be just.
Yes. Yep, yep. We had our folks walk through that building in the summer of 2023, yeah.
And you targeted the summer, just to give another month or two, you know, before the start of the school year.
Yeah.
But if you delay more than a couple months, then you're impacting a whole other school.
Yeah.
Trying to make the big, big difference between, you know, over the summer, so all the dust will settle at the start of the school year.
Yep.
Any other questions from board members, anything you're not clear of between the options in order to?
One of my concerns is, is that I would prefer, and I know, you know, as you indicated, we're just picking an option, but I would just like to see this school board office not adjoin to any of the options. Because I just think that's their own, that's their own little.
Right.
Building, you know, just like now, you know.
Right.
We're not connected to any of the other school buildings.
Right.
So, I just think, you know, my personal opinion is that I would prefer the school board office not be adjoin to any of the school buildings.
Yep. And that's, we certainly have property that is available to look at that.
I think everybody would prefer that. That's ideal. That's a, that's a $4 million decision.
Yeah.
You know, is it that important? And it leaves the space that's been pointed out empty, you know, is, can we justify that?
I mean, if we went with it being, as far as one of the options, that I just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, it's visible. People know it's the school board office versus going through the main office to the.
No, but that was on one end. I think you said make it more visible so that it was more noticeable for the people to know where it was.
Yeah, it's the original front entrance to J C I S is over there by the gym.
Yeah, so.
One, one idea I had, I knew what your concern was, is continue to utilize the space here, but then do an addition up front that could have a more grand entrance to it.
Right, okay.
More than viable, and make sure that there's clear distinction between where you're in the board office versus where you're using this one. So, I think there's a way to creatively do that and still accomplish that. We may not need all that space, but we just wanted to point out there's different options on where you can do it.
Yeah, and actually, a good thing to do would be to go and, let's all go together and walk these buildings again. It's been a long time since, you know, we've looked at it from this perspective and come up with those kind of ideas, you know.
Yeah, put them mixed together would be good.
Because that entrance, if you look straight ahead, it's, it's a very grand atrium that goes all the way from the back of the building.
Yeah.
I mean, it could even become, part of that could become office space.
Yes. Any other questions I can answer?
So, for, because I've asked, because this is, this is, Mr. Jones is doing this like he had no obligation other than to try to help us bring this project to conclusion. But where, he's got an off-ramp here, you know, for when his services need to end, and it really is, once we pick an option, he'll help, help us kind of tighten that up and then, and re-scope it, you know, for, you know, real, real cost, take one more look at it, and then he'll help us put out requests for proposals to hire an architect engineering firm, which his firm is going to compete for.
Mm-hmm.
But, but that's, that's kind of where this project ends.
Right.
And where he will, he will jump off and help us get to the next phase, which is having somebody actually design exactly what we want to build with, build quality plans.
And then with input from the community too.
Oh, absolutely.
On ideas of how to.
Yeah, any, any of your architects that you, if you were to hire an architect, that would be one of the first things they would do is meet with all the stakeholders and.
They will facilitate that for us.
Yep. Be a whole series of meetings, and that's, to me, that's the, that's the best part of the process is to get out in the community, talk to them, and find out what their concerns are, and try to come up with a solution that addresses all their concerns.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
If no other questions, we'll release this hostage, and we'll, we'll visit this later in the, at the open session of the meeting. Thank you very much. All right, guys, next is Ms. Sheriff with McClure Company, and this is a very compatible, related presentation that she's going to give. Dr. Jones and I have heard it, and she had been working with her previous superintendent, unbeknownst to us, for almost a year, starting last November, and it just didn't get to us, and then, well, with all the changes and stuff, it never got to us. But, and then she's also been working with the county. So, the county has already signed the letter of agreement that we're considering signing, and, and the reason we're somewhat rushing this is because, not because it's not a very mature idea, mature discussions, but we're now kind of holding up the progress and holding up the works. And we have the most facilities in the county to, to benefit the county and taxpayers from agreeing to this, the presentation that she's going to have. And it's about performance contracting, and I won't steal any more of your thunder, but just realize it's a very mature discussion with the county and even the school system. It's just kind of new to some of us.
Thank you, Chairman Croxton, and thank you, members of the board, Dr. Jones, for having myself and my technical counterpart, Alyssa, here to share with you, just as Chairman Croxton mentioned, the results of a preliminary energy savings scoping audit that we performed for the schools last year, and how using that program can help you use energy savings towards funding school improvements. So, what we'll do is tell you a little bit about McClure, and why we've partnered with the county, and why we're partnering with the schools to help you in energy efficiency as we embark to schools improvements that, that Randy just proposed on as well. Our company has over 70 years' experience being a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing expert, serving the Mid-Atlantic. We've done over 300 projects for K through 12 institutions, so we're very well-versed and influential in leveraging what our expertise on is on the mechanical, electrical plumbing, but also leveraging the Energy Savings Performance Contract to make them cost-efficient for you and to help the funding of these projects without being such a burden on capital investments upfront and your board of supervisors. What we represent, myself and Alyssa, is very, we are a small group of over 600 employees at McClure, most of them being your technical experts, your field experts, your engineers, not just us. So, you'll be dealing with a lot of the people behind the scenes doing the engineering, the design of the projects, and working inside of your buildings, become more energy efficient. How that helps you is it gives you one-to-one connection with your experts, the people that are going to be the, doing the design, which makes it more continuous for you. You're in alignment, you can control your projects and what's being built, what's being designed, and how we're helping you and the schools in bettering the school learning environment for the students, including that cost control. You also get guaranteed savings, guaranteed firm fixed pricing through doing that design bid program that the Energy Savings Performance Contract relies on. And you also get that reduced markup. So, when we talk about efficiency, we're not just talking about energy. We're talking about from the beginning of a project to the end of construction, leveraging every efficiency in your operational and your, and your pocketbook as well. We use the Energy Savings Performance Contract, and in case nobody's that accustomed to it, we use the Energy Savings Performance Contract because it gives the path for schools to implement energy efficiency upgrades within their buildings, and these projects help you avoid using upfront capital investments. So, in fact, we're looking within your existing budget and your operating budget, money that you're spending to your utility companies, or spending to service and maintain older parts, mechanical systems. So, we're looking within for you, so without having to ask the board supervisors or the community for increasing taxes or upfront money that the board's version might, might not approve. Now, the cost of the actual assets that are being upgraded, as well as the total project costs, the installation, as well as the maintenance, are all bundled into these projects. And you can finance them over a period of term, most are 15 to 20 years, and you pay for it with the savings that you incur from the energy efficiency upgrades that you do. So, we're basically capitalizing on the energy efficient upgrades and the difference between the cost that you spend today and the cost you will spend with energy efficient light bulbs, for instance. So, we're taking that forward and using that to invest and pay down the stream of payments for that project, so you can capitalize on the improvements upfront. Some of the energy conservation measures that we use to create the savings that fund the project, I'm not going to name them all, but this is just a few of our most common that we see that can easily grab some savings as well as make an impact in the educational environment. Lighting upgrades, as I just mentioned, building envelope, that can be your windows or any kind of insulation, so we don't let too much good air out and bad air in. Roofing upgrades, as Randy had mentioned, for the elementary school, renewable solutions like solar, HVAC systems, boiler upgrades, chiller upgrades, building automation as well as plumbing. We are also asked often if we can incorporate non-energy efficiency measures into these projects, leveraging the bundle, and the savings can buy down other otherwise cost-intensive scopes. That can be security upgrades, that could be vestibules, or even the screen, the film on your windows for security, as well as, it also helps control the airflow and keep everything comfortable. Technology, communication, kitchens, stadium lighting, flooring, painting, this can go. We can incorporate a number of things, and we're getting more and more innovative as we age. And in addition to working towards the project, what we do to, to help you build that project is we give you a lot of transparency, and we work for about three to four months extensively within your buildings to understand your systems. We inventory your assets, we grade your assets, and give you a conditional assessment of where they are in conjunction to their, end of their useful life, or if they're problematic. What you're looking at is two examples of data, reports that we compile to understand your buildings, and then we collaborate with you and your team to decide what goes into making a meaningful and impactful project that is both cost-efficient and helps the buildings, helps the students' learning environment. To help show how we make this work as a proof of concept, we had done, as, as Chairman Croxton mentioned, a preliminary energy savings, energy scoping audit for you. So, at a preliminary level, we went through the three school buildings. We identified, did, we went through and did a utility analysis, looked through how much you're spending for each of the buildings, as well as the system, the school system as together. We understood from a fiscal standpoint where you could benefit in saving money, and then we did surveys with your facilities team, walked through your buildings, understood the roofing, the mechanical systems, to where we have a technical list of recommendations for each building. And what we can share with you today is that preliminary technical solution, energy conservation list, condition review, and the financial potential at a very high-level budgetary point right now, to give you an idea of how this would work for you. I'm going to have Alyssa take us through the technical slides, and then I'll come back in with the financials. So, the first step with any energy project is to look at your utility bills. This will then become the funding for these capital and energy efficiency upgrades. So, we take an inventory of building square footage, what you spend on utilities, and we look at the last two columns there in the chart. We look at energy use intensity, how efficient your buildings are per square foot. So, the lower the number, the better. So, an energy-efficient school is around 30,000 to 40,000 BTUs per square foot. So, opportunities at all three buildings to improve efficiency. We also look at energy cost index. How much money do you spend per square foot per building? The lower the number, the better. For an energy, an efficient cost index is about $1.25 to $1.50. So, your numbers are a little elevated. You are an all-electric school, so we expect that, but we also expect to see those numbers come down with some efficiency upgrades. So, now I'll walk through the buildings. The second step of our study was really to understand your buildings. So, starting at the elementary school, the M E P, or Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Infrastructure, is between 22 to 48 years old. Many of those system components, including equipment, have a 20-year life. So, a lot of this system is coming to the end of life. Most specifically is the units that introduce fresh air. They're coming to end of life, so you're looking at a major replacement of H V A C equipment. The electrical equipment are all original to the building, that's about 48 years old, so they're in need of replacement as well. There's also opportunities to become more efficient, converting lighting to LED, as well as repairing some rusting roof and doors, and really sealing that building envelope. At the intermediate school, a little bit relatively newer, you're coming up on 20 years at that building by next year for that age of equipment. Again, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure equipment has about a 20-year life, so you have to start thinking about what to do with that equipment. There's also some efficiency upgrades there as well, upgrading the lighting to LED, as well as improving the building envelope and coming up with better R-values and better air sealing. Lastly, the high school is one of the newest buildings, not, and we didn't really find any major capital upgrades. Here, we're looking at energy efficiency upgrades only. So, looking at anything that currently is an LED from the lighting standpoint, converting that, looking at building envelope upgrades, and going to a more efficient domestic water heating system. Lastly, as kind of foreshadowed in the last presentation, there's a potential for a large amount of solar savings. Being an all-electric school, solar will provide the energy you need at a much discounted rate. So, right now, we're looking at a power purchase agreement. These agreements would have $0 upfront, where you lease a solar right up to 30 years. And you can see on the, the images on the left-hand side, these are proof of concept. So, these show you kind of how much area solar will take. These are not their final resting places. Just want to give you an idea of how large and where these could potentially go. So, at the high school, we're looking at, if you were to do a ground mount relative to that size, you'd be able to offset over 100% of the electricity need at that building and save up to 3.5 million over the next 30 years.
and save up to 3.5 million over the next 30 years. Also, we looked at a roof-mounted system at the intermediate school. This is looking to do, if you maximize the roof, about a 70% offset of what that building needs electricity-wise over a year with a potential savings of 1.2 million.
Thank you, Alyssa. What you're seeing now is a mock-up at the very, you know, high-level budgetary based upon the preliminary that listed scope of technical items and energy conservation measures. We like to go through an exercise where we give you three different options as a starting off point. So this gives you an idea of the level of what we can do to start the collaboration and building that perfect project for Essex County Public Schools. So with this mock-up, it was considering some energy conservation measures and critical needs for the, for the elementary school, as well as the intermediate school and high school. You can tell we did a, we did a budget neutral or actually under-budget neutral, so you'd be saving more than you were spending on, on program A and B that we built up for you. And then program C was basically giving you the buffet. If we did everything that we developed or looked at during the preliminary, all the costs considered would otherwise be a nearly $14 million project. But after you consider the savings from the renewables, as well as the energy conservation measures within the buildings, that $14 million project comes all the way down to only 5 million. Right. So these energy savings performance contracts really help you leverage savings, so you're not just spending, spending, you're really capitalizing, leveraging savings where you can to buy down that project. If you were to do any of these, you have additional ways to fund and finance these projects. Most common that we see are an infu, either one or an infusion, a combination of some of these bullets. You can always use internal cash. That could be items that are already on the budget approved that you just factor into this project as opposed to just spending for that project by itself. You can also use tax-exempt municipal leases and bonds, if you must. There's also the opportunity that we have, the Inflation Reduction Act, which can give you tax credits back for some of these renewable solutions out there. There will be utility rebates that you will have specifically with your utility provider that goes direct to you. That's cherries, that's a cherry on top of the savings that you incur from these projects. There's also always grant opportunities. If we see some that we know that you're taking advantage of in these projects, you'll have all the information, the technical requirements to apply for those grants. And that can be a reimbursement as well for you. So we'll navigate if there's ones that are applicable. We can help you identify and start applying if there's ones that fit just perfectly with the products you're implementing. And then, as Alyssa mentioned, using the solar power purchase agreement option gives you zero cost. You have that renewable solution and it just really inflates the savings that you can capitalize on these projects. So in addition to the financial benefits that you gain from these projects and the solutions that we're accommodating, there's also great opportunities for an educational impact, opportunity, student engagement, community engagement. Could be as simple as solar dashboards for students, as well as parents and other members of the community to see instantaneously and actively day-to-day how much you're, you're saving in electric from, from the solar opportunities. We've seen it implemented in many, many schools and how you can turn this into a curriculum, a CTE, or just a regular educational opportunity. We'd be happy to be your partner in being able to take that, what you gain and be able to share it with the students. Sorry, jumped ahead. So where we are at, and as I mentioned, we had done a preliminary energy scoping audit for you, bulk of which was done last fall/winter. So as you can see, there's things changing for Essex County Public Schools and we can easily adapt as we move forward from what we call Phase One in this preliminary energy scoping audit. And then upon approval, we would love to move into what we call the investment grade audit, where we'd spend far more time within your buildings, getting full inventory, conditional grading, understanding and getting firm fixed pricing on your cost, as well as your savings that you would then use for building your project. Most of this 100% can be placed in conjunction with the efforts that Randy is working on with you and the other initiatives that you have going on. I would say the investment grade audit would be about two to three months. Project build would come right after there and we'd be coming to you and presenting a number of project options, one, two and three, for you to select. And then we can move into construction for you. There is measurement and verification ongoing, so you get that guaranteed savings that we talk about. We take the risk, you don't. So ongoing, there's an annual measurement and verification where we see what savings you've signed a contract for and we guaranteed for you is being met year over year. And then I wanted to close down our presentation with a case study, a recent example and a very, a neighbor to you, Caroline County Public Schools. Dr. Calvarick and her team roughly two years ago embarked on a similar journey where they had intense HVAC needs, very cost intense through their middle school and their high school. And they couldn't get the funding to solve these critical problems. So what they went ahead and did is issued and developed the energy savings, they leveraged the energy savings performance contract program, took the HVAC needs that they had, coupled it with the energy conservation measures of lighting, building envelope and a 20-year solar power purchase agreement. And what otherwise would be a nearly $11 million project ended up only being $3 million. Thank you. And can we answer any questions?
Board members?
Well, I like the fact that, you know, possibility we could get some grants, because grants is always great to have. So that's, that's great. And I'm also glad to see that we do have a neighboring school, which is Caroline County, because we always like to compare Essex to Richmond City or wherever. It's good when we can compare and see what a neighboring school division has done. Because again, you know, we want to be able to see what locally divisions have done, like I said, versus Hanover or Richmond City, which is totally out of our scope, so.
Absolutely.
And also I was wondering why we were so much on a rush for this project. But to hear that you all have been, have had a dialogue before.
Yeah, it's been a year. It's been a year in the works, yeah. So it's just because we didn't realize it. It hadn't come to us yet and then with all of our changeover is there. So it wasn't anybody doing anything wrong, it's just we were a little bit out of the loop.
Timing.
Yeah. The important things about the solar, to me, this is the best kind of solar because it's, I described it as closed loop. You're like, we're getting all the energy out of it directly into our buildings. We're not trying to sell it back into the grid or anything like that. So it'll be sized appropriately to, I guess the objective would be to provide 100% of our, our electricity needs, but yeah, but it, or as close to that as possible. So it'll be on each campus to satisfy the needs of that campus, is how they intend to do it. And it takes advantage of our, you know, vast amount of roof space. And, and we can put it out on the grounds if we want, but it'd probably be more desirable if it can all fit on the roofs and we don't really have to look at it or give up any, you know, landscape.
So with that being said, looking at the CIP that we're looking at, how would that affect any type of construction? Because it sounds like this is something that you all want to do like right now, immediately.
We would recommend getting started in the investment grade audit as soon as we can. That's three months of us basically fact-finding and combing through your existing buildings before we would even talk to you about which project options we would recommend before moving forward. So to allow us to deploy our troops and start studying your building and getting those costs and savings while you're working on, you know, selecting other initiatives. It would allow us to really get that information, get that data, and then we can start making and figuring out which, which programs and projects you'd like to implement. I would say that there is, there is a perfect opportunity ahead where some of these items could be implemented as soon as summer 2026. And to use that summer construction window when students are out gives them a great opportunity for when they come back to school in the, in the fall. They have updates and something to be excited about and you get to save, start saving money sooner.
It's funny, that's a great idea as well. I mean, can you, like these options we just discussed and we'll, we'll select one later tonight, can you do your investment grade op, you know, because by the time you come back, can you do your investment grade audit on one of those options?
Yes, we can.
So that, you know, it tells us, because like what I saw in the preliminary estimates is, you know, $9 million of savings if we invest, you know, the $5 million. Well, that's not, that reduces the cost to the county of the renovations that were proposed by $9 million over the lifespan of, of the thing, so.
That's exactly right.
So you can do that? Can you factor in, you know, the 17 acres that we talked about as either, at a minimum, it's, it's probably 10, 12 acres of field space? If you had to put more on roof space on anything we might build there?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll put together a couple of options for you to look at that leverage if we were to do a housing complex with some solar on the ground or just a combination of the two and leveraging some roof so that you can see if you wanted to go over and beyond and then we can scale it back. This is all about us doing the groundwork for you and investigation and sharing with you and giving you a lot of control and options to select what works best. So that will be something we'll happy, happily do for you.
More importantly, can you do it in two weeks?
You got it. Um, we can get close. We will 100%. What we'll like to do and what we're planning to do for you would be redesign what you're looking at here.
Yeah.
Incorporate the land behind the intermediate school as well. And maybe take, scrub away some of the elementary school items that may not, like land might not have the payback in enough time. So if we focus on the intermediate and the high school and what is critical for the, for the elementary school, but then revise it with some of those updated solar opportunities, we will happily bring that to you for town hall.
So you could, so there may still be some things worth doing if we're going to use the elementary school another two, three years. It'd still be worth investing in it.
Absolutely.
To return, okay. So you'll, you'll advise us on that.
That's exactly right.
That's huge. Is everybody okay with that direction?
Yep.
They'll, they'll apply this to, we'll, we'll give factor whatever option we pick. They'll apply this analysis to that option. And then at the town hall, Mr. Jones will, will talk to the public about what option we picked. She'll talk to the public about, here's how much savings that can be generated from this. And again, the county's already agreed to do this with, with all of their facilities, so it just makes sense that we do the same, so.
Do, absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll do. Thank you.
Does anybody else think this sounds too good to be true? She said guarantee and she said it about 10 times.
We're going to hold you to it.
Virginia legislation holds us to it. But thank, we, we're happy to do it and happy to partner with you. Thank you very much for your time.
Not to say job, but this is a big load off of our minds because all the stuff that the superintendent and Bud Hoover and stuff, you know, all the decisions about what to do, you know, they're going to look at it in macro and advise us on, here's what you need to replace and when and put us on the schedule, you know, so that we don't have, you know, people are trying to fix the things, make, make, you know, decisions that, that. There's always so much time in the day to, to come up with a long-range plan as well as, as maintaining the facility. So I think we'll welcome the help we needed, you know, to get the best solution, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to postpone FOIA training another month, based on the time? Not that we don't want to hear it and receive the training, but.
Everybody wants to hear from me and Terry.
But we want to stay on the schedule and go into closed session. So if I could get a motion to, if you guys agree to postpone FOIA training until next month.
I'll make a motion to postpone FOIA until next month.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of postponing Freedom of Information Act training to next month, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. The motion passes. And may I get a motion now to enter into closed session for legal matters pursuant to the legal exemption at 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses 8 of the Code of Virginia and review and discussion of personnel matters regarding four resignations, terminations or retirements, one appointment, six supplements or extra assignments and nine amendments pursuant to the personnel exemptions at 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Seven.
May I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session. Thank you.